Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention, please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask everybody to silence your cell phones. Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees meetings an open meeting for the public to observe before conducting district business. Therefore, the audience members may address the board during designated audience items section on the agenda. If you have any written materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide it to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we will provide it to the board. We also ask that members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting, so everyone is safe while here proceeds. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the board room. Please speak directly into the mic close if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Dr. Barros. The time is 6:00 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. Meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. I'm going to ask everyone to join us standing while we state the pledges of allegiance, and remain standing for a second invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a second invitation. We start with recognition.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a number of outstanding students and staff to recommend, to recognize this evening, so if the board would be there at the on the floor in front of the base, we'll get busy doing that.
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we have some outstanding students to recognize this evening. I do want to start with our Dulles High School Air Force Air OTC students here. If I could please have fourth-year Cadet Major Kylie O'Reilly join us, and second-year Cadet Senior Airman Brian Chow. Ms. O'Reilly has just led her group through its three-year Air Force unit evaluation, receiving the highest rating of exceed standards. Mr. Chow was elected to lead 16 peers in the execution of the 30-step drill movement during the unit evaluation, and the Air Force evaluator said that their performance was flawless. So congratulations. Thank you very much. I'd like to invite our student officers representing Sartarsha Middle School Symphony Orchestra, Ms. Kaitlin Turnbow and Lucas Spam. You could please join us. Sartarsha Middle School Symphony Orchestra was chosen to perform at the 2017 Annual Midwest Clinic, and this is a great honor for them. Only a handful of musical ensembles were selected from hundreds of applicants nationally. And we'd also like to give a big round of applause to their directors, Sophia Shea and Simone Zerpa. Thank you for being here as the audience students. Appreciate you. For our next recog- oh, very good. Next, we're going to invite Austin High School Orchestra. Austin High School, we have Elizabeth Shane. If you're here, could you please stand and be recognized? Join the board. Also, can I invite the orchestra directors, Anne Victor and Zorain Yashnak? If you could also come be recognized. The Austin High School Orchestra was selected to perform in the National Association of Music Educators Honor Ensembles. Only twice in FBI SD history has a music student been selected to play in this organization, so we're very proud of Elizabeth. She was only one student from Texas selected to participate in this prestigious event. Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have a couple of outstanding groups of students, and I'm going to turn the program over to Dr. Audrey Udi to recognize our students who are representing the FBI SD student delegations to China and Taiwan. Dr. Udi?
Good evening. This evening, Dr. Dupree and Board of Trustees, we would like to recognize each of our students from the China and Taiwan delegation to visit our Asian sister schools in November of this year, and so we'd like to recognize each of the individuals and their schools here tonight. We are in our fourth year of a relationship with Bo Shan, China, and we're in our first year of a relationship with Pingtong, Taiwan. It was our first delegation to Pingtong. And so we are happy to have all of these students here. They are sophomores, juniors, and seniors from their respective high schools. There are 20 delegates who were able to visit China, and nine who were able to visit Taiwan this year. I believe our students had an impactful opportunity to explore other cultures and to build relationships with these two sister schools, and learn much about themselves, each other, and the countries that they were visiting. We know that it is a priority of the FBI SD board to build the profile of a graduate in our students by the time they graduate, and this is just one aspect of that, getting to travel and learn about diverse places, and to better understand how to build relationships with other countries. This is an initiative that's also supported by Fort Bend County, our county commissioner and county judge as well, and they each year help contribute to this initiative. We also have had some contributions from Gold Star Transportation this year, helps support students going, as well as Classic Chevrolet and Judge Bear's Office. It has truly been an honor to work with each of these young people this past couple of months, and we would like to honor each of them by name this evening. First of all, from Austin High School, we would like to welcome Jasmine Cereo and Jerome, brother and sister, and they were great traveling partners throughout the entire trip. And from Bush High School, Sarah Maybrin, Nana Boteng, Natalia Garcia Sanchez, and Pink Agla. From Clements High School, Alex Choumet, and also with him were Mary Kate Ryan and Samir Sureshwar. From Dulles High School tonight, we have Abigail Sander, and also accompanying her from Dulles was Ruthy Wong. From Elkins High School, we have Haley Fernandez, and her partner is Bonnie Fonsel. From Hightower High School, Tara Shaw. Representing Kempner High School were Jacqueline Jen, Lietram, and Annie Zhu. Rich Point was represented by Soren Edinger McHood. And then Travis High School, we have Representatives Randy Stewart and Brett O'Vander. For our Chinese delegation, I would also like to recognize the adults who helped accompany us on this trip, Diana Sayavedra, accompanied us. And then Laura Lightmore, teacher at Kempner High School, and Wendy Zhu, teacher at Elkins and Travis. We would now also like to recognize our Taiwan delegation, and so coming from Dulles High School this evening is Crossford Williams. Representing Elkins is Mason Cooper. Rich Point was represented by Maddie Major. And then Travis High School is represented by Quinn Brady, Dakota Tika, Ella Jasma, Trevor Johnson, Isha Merchant, and Grace Newman. And the adult delegates who accompany the Taiwan delegation. We had two board members, Mr. T D George and Mr. Dave Rosenfeld. On this trip was Joan Rosenfeld, Mr. Rosenfeld's wife, and Mike Madden, who apologized that he's not here this evening. He has the blues, so do we in this three years. And then Miss Mingyu Wong and Meredith Wosik, our CTE, our Strategic Director, also accompanied the students on this trip. We now have a couple of students who wish to speak briefly about their experience in China and Taiwan, and so I first want to invite up Mason Cooper.
Hi, so like she said, my name's Mason Cooper, and unlike the other delegates, I've had the opportunity to experience both Taiwan and China. I went to China my freshman year through the Fort Bend Global Initiative. I often found myself comparing my home experience to my Chinese experience, my Taiwanese experience, and I really think it made the trip better as a whole. Regardless of the small details such as preferred car brands or haircuts, or very large details such as architecture, family structure, religion, and social standing, the comparisons were always there. I soon came to realize that these differences are what alter our basic beliefs and ultimately make us different as people. However, through the adventure of teenagers across the world, I find that we are far more similar than our adult counterparts. Our common focus is on our future. We stress, and sometimes overstress, about our schooling. We all worry about our future education and career, and none of us seem to get enough sleep. Oh, and most importantly, fall in the sleep in class, and it isn't international related. We also all have common social issues, drumming with friends, ins and outs of relationships, trying to look cool while still enjoying ourselves, and discovering who our true friends are. The more I travel, the more I feel connected with the modern globalized world. I find that in myself, I now look more for the reasons behind beliefs rather than the beliefs itself. This ultimately answers the questions as to what makes our nationality so different and similar, and there is no better way to discover these answers than traveling. I'll end with an ancient Chinese proverb that I was told before I left for China in 2014. Traveling thousands of miles is better than reading thousands of books. Thank you.
And now Ella Jasma would like to speak a few words on behalf of her delegation.
Before November 2nd, I would have never thought that I could get on a plane and fly to Taiwan without my parents in the middle of the school year. I was scared and nervous at the idea of staying with an unknown family that spoke little English, experimenting with new foods, and sitting in a classroom full of students I didn't know. I later realized throughout my trip that it was okay to be scared at times. I didn't always have to know what was going on or what people were saying to me. For example, at night, my host student Wendy would take us to different restaurants and stores while I followed her around like a long sheep. In the beginning, I would try to ask where we were going, but the response I received would be about where her mom was picking us up instead of what restaurant we would be eating at. This made me feel uneasy and concerned, as I like to always know what is going on, when and where. After I realized I couldn't always be in control of the situation, I saw myself having more fun and connecting with the students. Something I enjoyed about the trip was that we could experience things that we had previously learned in school. When I walked through the museums, I recognized the names of empires and embers that I had been taught a few weeks prior. The real-life educational immersion allowed me to see things that would have only been possible in my textbook. One of my favorite memories is when some of the other four friends students tonight went to a birthday party for a student in our class. That night, we talked, sang, and almost got kicked out of the restaurant for being too loud. No one cared that our conversations were choppy and often nonsensical, or that we were from different backgrounds. We still laughed, made jokes, and acted like normal teenagers. This was also the first night that I went to sleep after 9:30. I learned that even though we live in different countries and speak a different language, we are still high schoolers who worry about our grades and go to the mall with our friends. I recommend this trip to everyone because it allows you to experience a new culture firsthand and make unique lifelong friendships. I was the happiest I've been in a long time, and I hope that other students are able to experience it as well. Our last, we'd like to thank Oregon ISD for providing this opportunity to students across the district.
I'd like to invite one last student representing the China delegation. He also spoke in front of a very large crowd at our farewell recognition, and so Alex Choumet, would you come up and share a few words about your experience?
Okay, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Alex Choumet, and I'm a senior at Clements High School. And having a brother who already went through the China trip three years ago, I had certain expectations coming into this trip. However, on behalf of all the students, I could proudly say that my expectations were completely blown away. From being able to climb the Great Wall of China, to being actually immersed into different Chinese classes in Bo Shan, I had a wonderful experience by being able to learn more about the Chinese culture and eat some delicious Chinese food as well. My favorite experience throughout the entire time that I was in China specifically was when I was able to spend a weekend with my host. I looked to a mountain in Guangzhou, which is the third biggest city in China, and I learned Kung Fu from a Kung Fu master who actually taught Americans Kung Fu in Florida. So through this, not only was I able to get a really big glimpse of what Chinese culture was all about, but also I had an amazing bonding experience with my host, that in which we are able to strengthen our friendship that I'm sure will last a lifetime. So before we continue, I would just like to thank the entirety of the FBI SD staff, as well as the FBI SD administrators, that allowed for this trip as a whole to occur, and allowed for the trip to occur in the future for future trips. So with this being said, I will make sure that in the future I take these skills that I've used and learned from my trip to implement whether it be in student council by making sure that Chinese foreign exchange students are comfortable in our school, but also making sure that in the future we accommodate for future students to have fun on this trip as well. So thank you.
I've been listening back down a little bit. We also have a few gifts to present to you on behalf of the Taiwan and the China delegations. We'll go first with the China delegation. Annie Zhu and Tara Shaw would like to present gifts on behalf of our friends from Bo Shan. And one that Annie is presenting to Dr. Dupree is the basketball that was used to play a basketball tournament and is signed by all of the players in that game. And then we also have a piece of pottery that Bo Shan gave to each of us to bring back, and so Tara is presenting that to Kristen Tustin and our board president. Okay, and now we have two gifts to present on behalf of the Taiwan delegation, and Quinn Brady and Crossford Williams will help present this. Professor is presenting a nice cap for Dr. Dupree to try wearing. And this is presented from the indigenous cultures that live outside of the Pingtong area, and so they sent that back on behalf of their community. And then a banner presented to our board president, Kristen Tustin, from Pingtong, our sister state. Okay, all student delegates, if you would, please come forward, and any adult delegates as well. And I also, as they make their wake word, would like to recognize all of the parents and guardians who are here in the room with the students tonight for giving their students this opportunity to travel. Parents, if you would, please stand so we can recognize you.
Congratulations, students. Thank you for being here. Thank you, board. That concludes our presentation on recognition. You don't want to stay for all evening. It's really fun. Next up, we have audience items. We have Sam, is it Ranwan? Thank you for being here. We'll make sure that mic is on. You'll have three minutes to speak, and Ms. Heliger will keep time for you, and she'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Go ahead.
Respected members of the board and some of our distinguished members in this house, but I thank all for giving me this opportunity to speak in front of the board. And the first thing I wanted to say was, I had applied for off-campus P E for the Board of Directors back in the beginning of the year, and Ms. Diane Thomas Sevadra and Ms. Laurie Sertin, they did a fantastic job. They were defending the process and what was put in place, but at the same time, they had foresight and courage to look at individual areas and permit that. My daughter, Donna, has been pretty first ranked in Texas at the beginning of the year. Now she's ranked number six in the state of Texas. So this program has really been a very helpful program for us. This one hour in the day of the day is very precious for us because of the commute, time it takes to commute from Sartarsha Middle School to the Tennessee Central. On the traffic filter, we lose a huge amount of time. So this off-campus P E has been very helpful for us, and my only request is this should not be an isolated case or a one-off case. Fort Bend ISD is a very good school district. My daughter has been a student in Walker Station Elementary School, and now she's a student in Sartarsha Middle School, and we are very happy and we're proud of the school district. And we want this to be the pioneering school in Texas where we not only academic excellence, but we also recognize sports excellence, and we provide opportunities and support for students who are individually excelling in individual sports so that they can take off-campus P E at any time. Perhaps we can make a framework where if they're top of the nation or top of the state, they can be given this permission. Otherwise, the option is to go to homeschooling, which is very bad for the student as well as for school district. This is my humble request that this topic be taken up, not only on this case, but for all students in Fort Bend ISD, middle school and high school for all use. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next up, Erin MacLeod. You'll have three minutes to speak, and Ms. Heliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Dupree. My name's Erin MacLeod, and I'm joined by my partner, Mabel Shaw. We are the founders of Pathways to Greatness, also known as Interbeam. We're here this evening to briefly share some information about our solution and request the opportunity to demo and pilot with Fort Bend ISD schools, so that we can show you how we can help your teachers drive student performance. We are proof vendors with Fort Bend ISD under RFP 17-036 LB Classroom Instruction, Learning Materials, Equipment, Supplies, and Related Items. We are a certified MWBE company and based here in Fort Bend, Kansas. I want to emphasize that we are local and we're dedicated to partnering with Fort Bend and servicing our partners here in our community. We created an innovative, teacher-friendly solution that I'm going to show you, and there's also a handout that I'll distribute to you later. So, who am I just pointing from? First thing I want to show you is, what you're looking at is called DataDaps. It's a one-page summary. It's the results of either a full-on STAR exam, a PACE exam, a unit test exam, or any number of TEES that you specify, because we can customize to the request of Fort Bend or the school level. In the first area you see here is a ready to summary. It shows you the most highly tested areas in the STAR exam, and here you see a percentile And here, what you see is a whole group versus small group retention. Based on the results of the exam, if over 50% of your students are not performing in a particular TEAT, we recommend whole group retention. If over 50% of your students, if under 50% of your students are not performing in a TEAT, small group retention.
30 seconds.
Okay. I'm going to skip to here, misconceptions. This is where we're highly familiar. What we've done is we have identified every answer, every answer in a question as a misconception or distraction, so we help you quickly diagnose what's going on with your students so that you can understand misconceptions that are across multiple TEES. I want to bring one last thing.
Good time.
This is one page for your team.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having us. Happy holidays.
All right, next up are information items. We're going to start with the internal audit update. Mr. Rice, did you want to give an introduction to this?
We have Mr. Gibson here, with Gibson Consulting, who will give a report on the asset and risk management internal audit report.
President Hassan, Dr. Dupree, members of the school board, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to give an update on the internal audit function and present the asset risk management audit report. We are honored to be part of this board initiative with continuous improvement of Fort Bend ISD. This is our fifth year to be involved in this initiative. Tonight, as I said, I'm going to go through the asset risk management report. Also, I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are on our other audits this year. We are right in the middle of the technology fiscal year. We are right in the middle of the technology audit that started back in October. Site work is already completed and that work will be completed in early spring. We also just started a special education audit. That site work will occur in January and that work will be finished in late spring. We also have a human resources follow-up audit that was requested by the board audit committee and included by this board and that will be both conducted and finished before the end of the fiscal year. That will also be spring activity. Tonight, I will present this report and go through the introductions of the project team, although I'm the one presenting tonight. I wanted to credit where credit is due. Then I will discuss the findings and recommendations of the audit. And then there were two board questions that we received in advance and I have formulated responses to those questions. But I'll also be available to answer any questions at the end of this presentation and I will also make any members of my team available to answer questions if there are questions that I am not able to address here tonight. I was the director for this project, Christopher Tally. I was the auditor that led the asset management portion of this audit. Shain Roll is the project manager. And Russ Edwards of Kite Consulting was our subcontractor for the risk management area. So there are actually two audit areas, asset management and risk management. These two areas are often combined when we're doing internal audits because there is some degree of overlap. A lot of our insurance coverage relates to property, a lot of our risk relates to property. But they are two separate audits and they have two separate scopes and objectives. The fixed assets, in that audit, we addressed the management organization of the fixed asset management function. We looked at the entire lifecycle of this fixed asset management from the purchasing and receiving to the monitoring of those assets, to the disposition of those assets, and then we looked at how technology is applied throughout the process. In risk management, we looked at the management organization as well, also looked at your specific insurance policies and procedures as well as your risk exposures. Page 27 of our report kind of gives a good definition of what risk management is because people hear that and automatically think of insurance, but it's really broader than just insurance. There are really four elements of risk management. One is risk avoidance. Risk avoidance, it's things that we do or we don't do to mitigate or eliminate risks. So if it starts snowing outside, we usually shut down the school. That's an action we take to minimize risk. So that's an example of risk avoidance. Risk reduction and control, these activities relate to training, things we can do to help our employees be safer so that they don't have injuries. And we do this through carefully written JavaScripts to make sure that we restrict the activities of certain positions so that they aren't performing things that put them at risk. That's an example, other examples of risk reduction and control. Third is the assumption of risk. The assumption of risk is what we, Fort Bend ISD, are willing to assume on risk. This includes like deductibles, copays, or losses that we cannot convey or risks that we cannot convey to others. So that's a risk that we are willing to take as a district. And the fourth is transfer of risk, and this is insurance. This is where we assign risk to someone else and pay them a premium and then they cover a portion of all of our losses. Our methodology is similar to what we do on all of our audits. We request and review a lot of data. We look at the policy framework for asset risk management. We conduct onsite interviews and focus speech sessions. We did a warehouse walkthrough on the asset portion of the audit, asset management portion of the audit. And we did campus walkthroughs on the risk management portion of the audit. And the results of the campus walkthroughs are presented in the appendix to this audit report. We also conducted transaction testing as it related to fixed assets and actual testing procedures are on the following slide. We tested purchasing, receiving, recording, and monitoring, the calculation of appreciation on the assets, disposals and retirements, and system access levels. And you'll notice that these tests pretty much mirror all the different audit areas faculty with the climbing scope of work. So this is a full lifecycle of the fixed asset function plus the system access levels or the technology access and how technology relates to all of the areas. There were no earth-shattering findings in this audit. There were some, there were 21 recommendations. Management agreed with most of the recommendations, virtually all, I believe. And there were two that I wanted to point out and then I'm going to go through a sample or examples of some of the other recommendations. The primary issue in asset management was efficiency, not compliance or control. So in fixed assets, you normally want to make sure that things are protected, that we have secured access to the facilities. And by far, with severely minor exceptions, we really take care of our fixed assets and we have the controls over the access to them. Where we were deficient in fixed asset management was in the use of technology to make the process work better. So things like barcoding, where you don't barcode all of our fixed assets. Therefore, we can't scan those barcodes when we're doing inventory. So this created a lot of manual processes and procedures, Excel spreadsheets, and other things that limited our ability to be as efficient as we could in this area. So that was the primary overall kind of theme for the asset management was better use of technology to be more efficient in this function. In the risk management area, the district does not have a risk management plan that defines the programs, goals, procedures, and responsibilities. This, there's a page reference in the report. I'll get to it in a second. But there were several things that we saw that basically were indicative of the lack of a plan. One was there was a diffusion of responsibility for risk management across different areas. There was an emergency and safety department. There was an environmental safety department. There was a risk management area. And then really, all of the district has some responsibility, all the management positions have some responsibility with respect to your risk management. And these different departments weren't communicating in all cases. There was not collaboration or coordination in all cases. And so this really prompted a need for a planning effort to better coordinate these and in some cases, we made some organizational recommendations to align these better. Another evidence, another piece of evidence for the lack of plan was the lack of certain functions we expected to see in the risk management function. And this had more to do with the analysis of losses or claims. So we put a lot of that responsibility on our insurance providers. We need to assume more responsibility in doing that analysis. And so these types of activities should be and will be embedded in a risk management plan so that this type of work can be done on a monthly basis. So these were the two kind of overriding themes for these elements of the audit. We did have commendations. These are all in the area of risk management. The transportation department conducts regular accident review meetings to examine accidents and should suggest corrective actions. The number of safety meetings with lead custodians has been increased from quarterly to monthly. And while these may seem like minor things, the transportation area and the custodial area are two of your more riskier occupations in this district. And so when you have riskier operations, you're more prone to have accidents or insurance claims in those areas. So these are significant. We wanted to point those out. Third, there are cybersecurity efforts in place. The district's computer media is no longer in use. And so we wanted to acknowledge that. I'm not going to move on to the recommendations. You will notice that each recommendation is numbered. They are organized sequentially by number in the report. Each recommendation has a priority assignment, low, medium, and high. And the first set of recommendations, I believe, 1 through 8 are related to asset management and 9 through 21 relate to risk management. I'm not going to discuss all of these. Recommendation number four, implement formal procedures for delivering and tagging the fixed assets. This was probably the most significant recommendation that we made. Recommendation five on the next page, on the implementation of scanners, is closely related to this. These are the two things that can really help the fixed asset management function in terms of tagging all the fixed assets and using scanners to take in. It would be a lot easier for us to track our stuff if we could do it electronically. And right now, we're doing electronically on spreadsheets, but we're doing physical counts and we're not using available technologies to make it more efficient. Another recommendation, number six, is to utilize PeopleSoft. PeopleSoft is our financing human resources, our finance system. We need to use PeopleSoft for recording and monitoring of appreciation for recording purposes. Right now, we're using spreadsheets offline to calculate appreciation and resulting in some relatively minor errors. And everything was corrected before your audits are done, so it's not an audit finding. There was a procedural matter that needs to be addressed and we want you to use your PeopleSoft system and not it in order to do your appreciation calculation instead of doing it offline. Recommendation number eight, ensure that access is revoked within all PeopleSoft modules for all terminated employees. During our audit testing, we discovered that some terminated employees have access to certain parts of the system still. And so we were to detect that anybody had actually accessed the system, but we just need to make sure that the passwords are shut down once the employee is terminated. I'm going to switch to risk management. Recommendation nine is to realign the risk management function so that reports direct into the chief financial officer and reassign and contract specialist positions to the legal department or other procurement function. The risk management function during the audit reported to the procurement function. And there was a question about this by the boards, why did we make this recommendation? So I'll go ahead and answer this now. Risk management is not a procurement function. Risk management is broader than procurement. And so putting it under a procurement function makes it look like it's someone over at procurement would have knowledge and ability to manage a risk management function. It's much broader than that. It's a financial management function and then a lot of this, a lot of the exposure has to do with finances. So we wanted to realign it under the chief financial officer, direct into the chief financial officer for two reasons. One, we felt that that was a more logical alignment of where it belongs. And two, we wanted to elevate its importance organizationally. The district's risk management is a small unit, does not have many employees, but it's a very important function because it helps manage our risks. And sometimes our risk exposure can be really big dollar amounts. And so even though it's a small organizational unit, we recommended that be this realignment take place. Also related to this recommendation, there were two or three, I believe, three contract specialist positions in the risk management function. And they're really serving, they are really serving more of a procurement or legal function. We recommended that they actually fall under the legal department. We didn't really care to the legal services or the procurement function because that's really what they do. They're involved in the transactional elements of contracts. The transactional elements of contracts really is not a risk management function. So I think there were reasons that this happened. I think it had to do with the people that were overseeing the function. I think there were pretty good reasons in place for why this started this way. But now that, when you just look at it from an organizational analysis and alignment of functions point of view, we really need to get this alignment fixed. Recommendation 12 is to develop and provide quarterly and annual risk management reports. This will stem naturally from your risk management plan. So your risk management plan, once we establish all the roles and responsibilities and the coordination that needs to take place, then we can develop performance metrics and that will help us monitor this function more closely. And so the board should receive, the question, a board question about this recommendation also, about what level of detail are we talking about? The board only needs to receive a summary of this report periodically, quarterly or annually. And really, it's to show you where we are with respect to our risk management function and insurance program, if there are major initiatives that are underway, what the status of those is, what corrective action items are being taken. But that's all really at a summary level to the board. At the administrative level, there would be much more detailed analysis by policy, by risk management area. And so as anything else, whether it's student academics or facilities, the performance measurement is more detailed the further down into the organization that you go. And the board really needs to see the things at a board level, which is are we getting the bang for our buck? Is our risk adequately protected from the risk that we're employed in and are we complying? And so that's what we had in mind with the development of the performance report. Recommendation 14, I've already talked about. I don't think I need to discuss that further but it was a high priority. Recommendation 15, ensure that risk management unit reviews property coverages, exposures, limits, and losses. Recommendation 16 is similar to do the same thing for workers' comp. And so again, we need to assume more of the analytical responsibility for our insurance analysis. And that's really the essence of what we're By the way, on pages 36 to 42 of the report is a description of all the coverage, all the major coverage that the district carries. Some of these are legally required. Earlier in that section of the report, we've got through the compliance policy framework and then we actually list the, I think there's four different types of insurance that are required by law. And then there's other insurance policies that are up to the school system to implement at their choice. I'm going to move down to recommendation 20, leverage insurance providers to conduct loss prevention services. Have these services typically included in existing contracts? So loss prevention would be like safety training and we lean on our vendors, our insurance companies, to do a lot of this work for us. And we just weren't maximizing that under our current approach. And then the last recommendation was to implement risk management, emergency plans and responses. We just didn't have a well-documented or sufficiently documented approach here. And so we suggested that this be enhanced. So the questions, one was why was recommendation nine made to realign the risk management function? I believe I covered all this, but I'm happy to go over it again. Question number two was what is the right level of detail we suggested reporting under recommendation 12? And I also believe I answered that. I'm looking to see if there's anything that we did not address. I think I believe I did. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or comments about this particular audit report.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, President Hassan. And thank you, Mr. Gibson, for the report. We appreciate that. I want to take just a moment to remind everyone that the legislature transferred the internal audit management function from the superintendent to the board of trustees about 2005. That is with the exception of the annual financial report, which is still under the purview of the superintendent. And so at this time, Fort Bend, Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees has a very robust audit function. And so at this time, Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees has a very robust audit function. And we have transitioned from having an internal audit staff of seven years ago to having really no staff. We do get some assistance from Mrs. Martinez, who, who helps me collate invoices, much to the relief of Mr. Gibson. And, but apart from that, we have no internal staff working on the internal audit function. So Mr. Gibson's firm is able to bring best practices to bear on the audits that we choose to have performed every year, and they do a good job at that. However, their contract is up for renewal every five years. We go out for an RFQ and so, you know, they or whoever we select every five years is going to, is going to do that work. I just wanted to stress that once these audits have been reviewed and accepted by the administration, they're also reviewed by the audit committee and then presented to the public, presented to the rest of the board and the public, and they're available for public review. And further, Gibson does follow up on the recommendations that were made that the administration has agreed to implement nine months after the fact to see how we're coming on that. So we're not just doing this for fun. This is really implementing, looking at the best practices and procedures that we can put in place because some of the things we've been doing, we've been doing it this way for the last 50 years and sometimes they need to be tweaked. So for the, for the most part, I think all of the audits that we have been performing have been very well received and we're moving forward in the right direction. And no one can say that Fort Bend ISD is not keeping its house in order because we are. And in addition to that, the trustees have made presentations on the internal audit process at SLI and Tasci Tasci, through other school districts. So I think that we're on the, we're on the cutting edge of taking care of business. So, Mr. Gibson, thank you very much for being here this evening. And he has provided the overview of his report and included the report for your review if you're having trouble sitting down tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for summarizing that. And thank you, Mr. Gibson, for being here to share this report with us. I have a question related to the fixed assets. I just want to clear, I appreciate you, your report and addressing some of the questions I'd sent in earlier. I just want to clarify something, though. You said something that, with regard to recommendation four, which I think had to do with fixed assets.
I have to go back to it?
I sort of lost the right step.
Recommendation four was implement formal procedures for the delivery and tagging of fixed assets.
Okay. So this is more, was the concern here more of a logistical concern or was it that we were actually, that we had asset loss, that we were losing things?
No, we were doing things. We were, we're, we conduct inventories, we track assets. We're just doing it manually. We're doing it in an efficient manner. And so if we were better utilizing our tagging, we're just tagging all of our stuff. If we tagged all of our equipment, our fixed assets, it would be much easier to keep track of them as they, as stuff moved around. And it would also be easier to do physical inventories so that we can tell if something missing. We can also use it to find out if we did, it's usually not inventoryable things that you want to reorder, but it just, it gets it more efficient.
But you didn't think we were losing things?
No, we didn't see any evidence that, that any equipment was walking out the door. Now, there was one logistical matter, I think it was the location of the food services department relative to one of the warehouses where they had to walk through. They basically would have access to the warehouse. We noticed that of a very minor control weaknesses, so it wasn't that outsiders could come in and pick stuff, but it was a minor controlled thing that we thought should be addressed. But no, we didn't see any evidence that things were walking out of the warehouse.
Okay. Thank you. That's good. And that, that's, well, that's good to know. I'm glad, I'm glad we're not losing because I don't want to be on the news about how we lost a bus or we lost a car or tractor or anything else, tobacco and everything.
Well, that's an important distinction because we're talking about big, big items here, capital items. Your most significant fixed assets are obviously your buildings and your land.
Right.
And then, you know, next is vehicles.
Right.
And then computers and other type of equipment. But we're talking about the big computers, but the laptops aren't even counted as fixed assets because they don't meet this fixed asset threshold for the dollar spending. But there's a separate inventory of those that Albee's going to cover. My technology consultant's going to be addressing the technology audit on how we track technology equipment, that is the smaller equipment.
Okay. Well, that's great. So then my second question had to do with, and maybe this might be a little more of a question for administration, I, from a couple of these recommendations, I kind of gathered that there needed to be sort of an overall look at what different types of coverage that we had going on and what are sort of our overall comprehensive. You mentioned once about it, kind of adding a risk management plan, I guess, and then there seemed to be a response about looking at coverages and looking at management systems. And I guess, I'm trying to understand, is that, does that mean we're doing a review of this area, we're doing a follow-up, review of the more detail of this area or what's the, what are the next steps, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at?
Well, for us, you know, we responded as we generally do to each of the recommendations. And the follow-up for us, kind of followed several categories that you addressed. One is just looking at how we don't have a plan, is writing a plan and then building up activity with plan and support. That's probably the step one. The other piece that's, I think, more just truly operational is the piece of what coverages we have in place, what coverages we don't have in place. And as I heard Greg mention, the reliance on the, on our consultant rather than our own staff to do that and say, this is a coverage we need and study on a regular basis to make sure we're procuring the proper coverages at the proper level. So those are just the two major pieces that we're going to be tackling right away.
Okay. So that's kind of what I was getting at. So we're doing sort of an in-depth review to check on our coverage and our exposure and that type of thing, more in-house than just saying, someone, a salesperson saying, people I'd like to sell you.
Help you then.
Okay. Good. Hold on. Thank you very much. It sounds like you have some work in front of us, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your preparation for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Thank you for being here this evening. Right up next is our Lakeview Octorium update. Dr. Gray?
Yes, ma'am. So we wanted to put this topic on the agenda this evening because it's been on quite a while now. Staff has been working with the city of Sugar Land about the idea of creating an agreement with the city of Sugar Land and the Cultural Arts Foundation to transfer, convey basically the Lakeview Octorium to the, to the city. And so at a recent meeting, a joint meeting in the city council, the board talked about that publicly for the first time. We provided the board with updates over the last year. But the way we, you know, the city had a kind of a investigative, I guess they investigated it and explored it, we come to the city council while we were doing more in bringing to our board, which is, our more practice is to bring recommendations to the board. But in that meeting, it was clear that the city was further ahead than the district was in this, in this decision. And so we wanted to put this on the agenda tonight for our board to be able to have the public conversation and kind of the reach consensus as a board. Our motto of the conversations that the board will be doing, it's directly to say, yes, proceed or no, pull back in regard to what we want to forward with this. Of course, there's many pieces of it. And so I feel like our team, Veronica's going to lead the conversation and Oscar about our board prepared to contribute. I'm going to Veronica kind of take this from here and kind of set that up and then we'd like to have the board's conversation engagement around that seat.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Gray. And President, members of the board.